After a long career with the city, he started with the city in 1991 as an accountant. One, he spent a few years with the treasurer's office before joining the comptroller's office for a few years. And then in 1997, he was brought back to the treasurer's office where he was appointed deputy city treasurer. So we have had Mr. Rabey's experience as deputy city treasurer for 20 years. And just to give you a little highlight, when you talk about 20 years with the city treasurer's office, that's over $8 billion in cash receipts that came into the city.
Wow.
That's 2.4 million tax bills. So, you know, we're talking about with Fred's tenure, he's seen the resurgence of Grand Rapids from the building of Van Indelarina, DeVos Hall, the art museum, the Ford Presidential Library, Rosa Park Circle and other projects. But to his credit, we also have to mention the one thing that was a highlight we chuckle about in the office is, if you all remember the Grand Rapids hoops, during a personal property tax seizure, Mr. Rabey seized Hoopy, the mascot.
Do you have pictures of that?
So, we have several pictures of Fred, but I don't know if we have Hoopy. So with that, I've had the blessing that for the past three years, and my first, one of my first acts as city treasurer was to reappoint Fred Rabey to that position. And he has served in that capacity in exemplary fashion. I could not have had as smooth of a transition in my job without the strong deputy that Fred Rabey is. And so with that, I would like to present Fred Rabey to you for all of his years of service and the dedication he's had to the citizens and city of Grand Rapids and how he is a true public servant in every sense of the word. So, Mr. Rabey, I congratulate you and thank you for all of your years of service.
From my love affair with the city of Grand Rapids started when my family moved here when I was six years old. And the first thing he did as a kid, of course, is say, summer of 1961, ancient history, and, "What do you do for fun around here?" They said, "Well, we can go swimming at Richmond Park." I said, "No way, that costs money." They said, "Well, no, it's free." Free! So, yeah, every summer, Richmond Park pools and baseball in the spring, football in the fall, sledding, and actually they had ice skating on the ponds. So it was just, it's been a pleasure to serve the city of Grand Rapids that I love. And John, thank you so much. And I look forward to, if I could, Mary Beth, keep my lanyard when I turn in my...
We are gonna make an exception for you, Fred. We're gonna override.
Trade up my card for my senior citizen National Park Service pass. But I need some to put it on, so. Thank you very much. Thank you, Fred.
Fred, thank you for your service.
And for the second piece, this is now the changing of the guard because during the past eight years, I've come to realize the strength of our department and the strength of one individual who has served our department for 19 years and has received the training through the state of Michigan, through the Michigan Municipal Treasurers Association, who has learned from the ground up what our property tax system means, what our customers mean, her integrity and dedication to her job. I rely on that. I rely on her honesty, I rely on her feedback. Even when I want to race ahead, I have somebody who keeps me in check. And that's what you need in a deputy. You need somebody to keep you in check, you need a sounding board, and you need somebody who knows that state law to help you navigate what the city of Grand Rapids is faced with when it comes to property tax collections, seizures, foreclosures and whatnot. Through her time with the city, I just kept going back to this individual because I truly believe that there is no one else in the state of Michigan that could fulfill this job and be a replacement for Fred Rabey. And I would like to introduce Roberta Cahill as our new deputy city treasurer.
Hi.
Hello. Welcome. Congratulations.
Thank you. I started in customer service in my career, and then I got my accounting degree, and they go hand in hand in the treasurer's office. And I look forward to continuing to serve the city of Grand Rapids. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
One last item. The commission and mayor have asked me if I did have a staff. Well, I, for the first time in history, we did close our doors for 20 minutes. And so with you, if I'd asked the treasurer's office to please stand up so you can see the people behind that award. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Thank you all for your service. And thank you for sharing your eclipse glasses. It's awesome. I know lots of city staff did that, but thank you. It was fun seeing everybody out yesterday. All right. Thank you, John, also for your leadership. I was able to sit in fiscal this morning and was reminded of the great work that you're doing. So, thanks. All right, next we will turn to our city manager to make an announcement, and then we'll get to our three scheduled presentations.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to announce that today, we will begin to go live using Facebook to stream, I guess is the word, stream, our city commission committee of the whole meetings. So all you need to do is go to Facebook, click on like and follow the city's Facebook page, and you'll be there. This is very important, I think, because it's another continuing enhancement of our communication and customer service. It creates a direct link between people in their homes and the city commission and mayor. And it gives another access point for our citizens to watch you all in action. So we're excited as we grow, continue to grow our social media imprint. And I'd really like to recognize Becky Jo Glover and Alex Wiering for the good work that they did to pull all this together. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Greg, I have a question. Have you actually ever watched a Facebook Live?
Um, no, ma'am.
Well, now's your chance.
Yeah, I can't wait. I can't wait.
All right. Thank you. And we're gonna hear from Becky Jo in just a little bit as well for the website redesign update. But first, we're gonna get started with a presentation from the Rapid, an update from the Rapid. So we have Peter Varga here with us today, and this is good timing in light of the upcoming vote in November. So, Mr. Varga, welcome to the city commission meeting. And I know you have a presentation, and I'm gonna try to keep us on task because I have two other presentations. So I'll turn the floor to you. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Bliss and commissioners. We're gonna do this together. Michael Baltis is our outreach coordinator. He's gonna do part of it, and I'm gonna do part of it. And we certainly are gonna be able to answer any questions you have with the presentation.
Great.
Anyway, good morning. Okay. Here you go.
So I'm actually gonna start here, and again, thank you, Mayor Bliss and commissioners, for the opportunity to speak here today with you. So we're gonna start by looking at employment transportation, I think is really the heart of what the Rapid does. Looking at the most recent ridership survey that we had this past summer, 80% of respondents from the survey said that they'd take the bus to work at least once a week, or multiple times, or every day. So that is, continues to be the biggest driver of what the Rapid does. Looking at also employers and local governments to maximize access to employment, we had the recent Route 28 extension last year, which now connects Route 28 to a lot of the businesses along the Route 28 corridor into Cascade Township, also gives access to the new Universal Mary Freebed YMCA. We also had the recent Route 19 alignment, realignment to Oak Industrial Drive to serve that major industrial corridor. And then the participation in the Wheels to Walker work that we had done. And to date, their first year was 65,893 rides, so a very successful program thus far. And then looking at the Walker Late and Demand Study that we are currently in the middle of, looking at the needs that we need to serve along the three-mile corridor. We've had stakeholder meetings, sent out surveys to businesses, talked with a lot of business owners. So AE Comm, who's conducting that study, will bring the final report to the board in September. Another focus that we have is environmental stewardship, very important to us at the Rapid. We are currently in the middle of converting our fleet to compressed natural gas. So we currently have 28 buses that we have in the fleet that will be going out into service very soon. One-third of our fleet of 150 buses will be converted by 2020, and then the full fleet conversion will happen within the next 10 years. We do have a new facility, CNG fueling station, that is almost ready to go, very near completion at 1020 Market Avenue. We'll be fueling all of our buses there, as well as the city's Dash buses. And then we will also have a retail component where we can sell the compressed natural gas to government and private entities in the near future. And then along with that project, we will have additional storage garage for the buses that we will procure for the Laker line, the articulated buses. So also looking at environmental stewardship at our Go Bus fleet, it is fully converted over to propane. So propane is cheaper, burns cleaner than diesel, and is also produced domestically. Looking at ridership now, we had phenomenal ridership increases from the Rapid's inception in 2000, all the way up through 2014 when we peaked, specifically in that 2010 to 2014 range when we had the number of service improvements that we implemented as a result of the millage. And then since, you can see that ridership has been declining. This is a national trend, actually. There were only six transit agencies in the entire country that actually increased ridership last year. So looking more specifically at the decline, we're looking at fixed route ridership, which in our case was only a 2.8% decline, which is smaller than the national average, so that's a positive indicator for us. The larger decreases came from our contracted services, which includes community mental health, Grand Valley State University, GRCC and Dash. We did have a 6.3% decrease for that ridership. And now I'll turn it over to Peter to talk about the bus stop project.
Great. Thanks.
Thank you. The bus stop project is actually a collaboration between the city and the Rapid. The city had come to me and said that they want to put 250,000 to doing various improvements to shelters and stops in the city. And then I went to the board and asked the board for a $250,000 match so that we could work on the project. There's additional money from DGRI that's also gonna go into the project, so from three sources, we're gonna be implementing some improvements. We've met with the city and DGRI already and identified a matrix of solutions and improvements, especially shelters, solar lighting and ADA accessibility. We're gonna work together to create the best methodology. I think the goal the city had was, over a two-year period, we could do improvements to 150 shelters, and I think that's our mutual goal. So we had to apply for the money, and the feds insisted that we identify the stops before we even had an agreement with the city, how we're going to be moving with this. 29 stops were initially identified for the FTA, and 10 of them have to go through Section 106 review, according to the feds. That means we have to see if there's any environmental or historical impact on those stations. Regardless with the funds, with the 250,000, we can do the other 20 stops, but we can do improvements to any shelters we have in the city. For example, we could put solar lighting on all the different shelters out of the same fund. So we're not restricted to those stops, we're only restricted to new shelters in the program this way. And then I think we're meeting again with the city to finalize how we're moving forward, and then we're going to, at some point, announce publicly what we're doing. So I'm really looking forward to this project because it does combine two things in our minds that are very important. One is serving the communities that have a lot of people using the bus at boarding location, and also dealing with social equity at this point. The second project that's tied a little bit to this is another project we put into our grant program, which is 311,000, to do traffic signal priority in the corridors that most need better service. In other words, more timely service because of the congestion and loadings. In the division corridor, we discovered that because we had traffic signal priority, we gained eight minutes of running time. So this is very important because it makes the service more efficient. So the primary corridor we want to start with is Eastern Avenue. And then we're gonna go route by route, improving all the routes that have the highest need for maintaining timely service. So with the 311,000 collaboratively working with the city, Traffic Safety Department, we're gonna install the same system that we have in the division corridor. The added advantage for the cities is that police and fire get priority on the systems because we're putting up the upgrades in, so police and fire can benefit from that just as they do in the division corridor. For us, it's a different kind of lower-level priority, but to keep the schedule on service.
So now we're looking at a customer experience focus. Looking at, I think, one of the most exciting projects we've had in a long time is the implementation of our Wave electronic fare system. So we're looking at smart cards and mobile ticketing. Right now, we have the magnetic stripe cards, which do the job, but frankly, sometimes there are, there can be fare box jams, there can be long lines at the bus, it takes time for that interaction with the mag stripe cards. With the Wave card, it's a simple tap to get on the board, so it takes, you know, between one and two seconds. It's very quick, so it speeds boarding times. It's also account-based, so right now, if you have a 31-day pass, let's say you lose that pass, you've lost the value on that card. With a Wave card, with a smart card and mobile ticketing, it's account-based. So if you lose your card, you can simply cancel it, buy a new card and retain the value that's in your account. So I think one of the more exciting parts of this project is the fact that we are introducing what's called capped fare. Currently, there's only one other system in the United States that uses capped fare, it's out in Portland, Oregon. So what capped fare is essentially, it's a more equitable way to pay your fare. Right now, to buy a 31-day pass, you have to pay $47 upfront. And for a lot of our riders, they just, they can't front that cost. What capped fare does, it allows you to buy the value of that pass one ride at a time. So as soon as you've ridden enough in a month to reach that $47 cost, you've earned that pass, that monthly pass, and you can then ride the rest of the month for free. So it's a much more equitable way to pay your fare. Now looking at route flags, we did recently install all of the route flags on every single route in our system, just as another visual indication for those driving by or walking by to look at the stops and be able to identify what route that is. This is Route 1 and 10 and 16 here in Grand Rapids. So just another visual indication of what route you are accessing. And then looking at our Rapid Connect tools, we implemented this a few years ago. So using real-time information, using your smartphone applications or a desktop system, you can look at each of your routes, you can see where the bus is on your routes, there's no longer a guessing game, you're not standing at your route wondering where your bus is, you know exactly when it's going to arrive. It just helps when you can plan your trip a little bit better using this feature. We have a route stop and finder feature as well as trip planning. So we did open up all of our data, including to Google, so you can use Google Maps with all of our data to plan your trip. And then we have alerts and public service messages that's very customizable for those who sign up to get alerts as to, you know, where your bus is, when your bus is going to arrive, if your route is on detour and things like that. Looking at our fare structure, we did have a fare increase in 2015. So this is currently the breakdown of our fare structure. And at the bottom, I'd like to highlight the fact that our Go Bus eligible riders do ride the fixed route for free. There is a very high cost to offer the Go Bus trips for our passengers, and so we find it very beneficial to offer the fixed route to them for free. And then looking, we touched on this earlier, the Route 28 extension there, now with new access to the Universal Mary Freebed YMCA, but then also extending east into Cascade Township, increased access to all those businesses along those corridors. We actually had a ridership increase on Route 28 over the past year as well, so just showing that this extension has gone very well. And I will turn it over to Peter now to talk about the Silverline.
All right. Many of you are familiar with the Silverline, it's the first bus rapid transit system in Michigan. We've been operating this for quite a while, and we've seen two important facts that came out of it. One of it is that the ridership has increased actually in the corridor, on both routes, so that we have an increase in ridership. One of the things that really leveraged that to some significant was their partnership we had with GR Mobility on subsidizing the no fare zone between downtown and wealthy. That has also boosted ridership, so we're looking forward to continuing that project. Because we were successful in actually building a project on time and under budget and had a successful BRT, we approached the federal government and wanted to have a second BRT implemented. We went through the whole process of getting one approved, and I forgot to mention that we had some, these are the details on the ridership increase that we've seen in the Silverline corridor. Total annual ridership increased by 39%. The Laker line was a project that we'd been working on for quite a while, and we are actually the only transit system in the United States that got a full funding grant agreement for a small starts project last year. It came out of the Obama budget and it survived through the new administration. And that's because we insisted the whole time that this was a project that was, had validity, needed 80% funding from the federal government, needed one contract, not four different contracts like we had last time, because we really moved the project forward. With successful bipartisan outreach from legislators, we were able to actually secure this commitment. All the other transit system had a cap of $40 million this year, we didn't, we had 56 million coming out. And I actually, I signed a state maturity, which was historic because the state has never given us a contract before we actually got the federal contract. We'll get it in September, and we'll start the project. In May 2020, we're going to start with the new BRT, the second BRT in Michigan, the second BRT in this region. Operating funds are supported by state operating assistance in Grand Valley State University. We've negotiated GVSU, we've negotiated a rate that allows for the increased maintenance cost of operating a BRT, and we're gonna put that into a long-term contract so that that support will continue. And I think this is a benefit of the relationship we have with Grand Valley State University. Of course, they have their own motivations for it, they want to be a car-free university, they also want to make sure that their students can move through. So their Wave card is gonna be their ID. And yes, of course, most of the riders are gonna be Grand Valley State University students, but it's open to the public, anybody can use it at the same time, and it'll have the same amenities improvements that the Silverline has. Oh, okay. Thank you. This is just a demonstration of the loadings that we have at the university, and even with six-minute frequency, we have turned people back sometimes. That is why we're migrating to 60-foot buses instead of 40-foot buses, so we can deal with the capacity issues. And that's a good way to actually get bus replacement funds on their special project. The Laker line itself, we're at this point where we have got the feds to agree that we were ready for it. We had to go through a readiness review, they quizzed us about all elements of it, and the timing and the costs. And then once they said that we were ready for it, they agreed to actually appropriate the money, send, and we're ready. We are planning on revenue operations May 2020.
All right, Peter, I'm gonna give you like a four-minute just warning to...
I appreciate that. So let's see what, the Alliance study, you'll hear more about it as we move in the future because there's an awful lot of public outreach. It's meant to get ideas from everybody about what other improvements in the future could we wrap into our short-range plan and eventually bring back to the public. This is the timing on that, and the final report will come in March of 2018, and then the board will look at it and see how it incorporates into the short-range plan. We have implemented service improvements since 2011 in different ways, these are some of them. Some of it in partnership with the city of Grand Rapids, with Dash, and with the Silverline No Fare Zone. We were also able to look at efficiency in our system, make some other improvements. One of them was added Sunday service out to the west side in May. We're geared up to get ready for our millage renewal, 1.47 mil for 12 years. Those are the details that you have about what we think was the annual contribution from city residents. It will allow us to continue to serve and connect the six-city region on a stable basis. So that's gonna be in November. How we're gonna be able to pull everything together for the future is keep continuing the Transit Master Plan, see what other improvements we can make over time, get the board to look back at the short-range plan to see what improvements they do, they target for the future, wrap in the Alliance study and other studies we're doing so that we have a succinct short-range plan, and then let the board deliberate with the public what are the next I think I beat your time limit.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, I wanted to leave time for questions, so I will turn to my colleagues here to see if they have some questions for you. Commissioner?
Yes, I read about the Alliance study online, and I was wondering, Peter, if we could get a schedule of time and place when you're having the public input meetings?
Absolutely.
Perhaps we can get that out in our own ways? Because I had some disappointed folks who missed one of the earlier rounds, you know, we had them throughout the five cities, and I just wanna make sure that I try to reach back to those folks.
We'll make sure there are other opportunities, and I'll send the information to Mr. Sunstrom so he can distribute it.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Peter. I participated yesterday in a survey at DGRI and was really impressed.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lanier?
Yes. Thank you so much for this presentation. Thank you so much for the presentation. That Wave program really sounds interesting and equitable, I think is the word that you all used, and I would agree with that. I do have a couple of questions regarding the shelters.
Correct.
And I've had some conversations with Greg and Eric regarding this. I'm, I know that DGRI is planning to contribute $500,000 to the shelter piece, but we know that that's specific to their geographic locations, which is downtown. Then I know the city of Grand Rapids, as you mentioned, is contributing 250,000, and you're planning to match that. But because you have more than just one city to impact, I'm certain that the 250,000 that's being matched by ITP will go not only in Grand Rapids but beyond Grand Rapids, or is it specific to our city?
It's only specific to Grand Rapids. As I said, we had to identify 29 stops initially because the feds said we need to know where before we give you the grant, so we have those. They're actually equitably distributed. The improvements are only for the city of Grand Rapids. The premise I took to the board was, city of Grand Rapids wants to invest in transit, and I think maybe we should match that investment. And if other cities want to do the same, I think we'd have to reach that point where we're looking at that, too. So, yeah, we have 1,600 bus stops, but this project is intended only to enhance shelters or stops in the city of Grand Rapids.
So then the grant for the federal government, how much is that? Is that in addition to the 250,000?
The 250,000, and one thing we've had in conversations with the city, I've said that if the city wants to do it again next year, then I have to amend my capital plan, and I have to go back to my board and to do another match project. The way we'd have to do it, we'd have to delay the traffic signal priority project a little because we'd be taking the money out of that to do a match.
Yeah. And I do, city manager wants to jump in, and I know Josh Nairmore's been working on this as well. So, city manager?
Actually, we recently had a meeting where I think this project has moved forward so that it's about ready to start updating you all on where we are. I apologize that you're hearing about some of the latest nuances in public setting, but we're hoping to make this a two-year project, so there could be a million dollars that would be available in the city of Grand Rapids outside of downtown for shelters. If this all comes together, as Peter said, we would take care of 150 stops, between 100 and 150 stops, which would take care of most of the stops that have any significant ridership in the city of Grand Rapids.
Thank you. That's a really good update to hear. I know I've expressed to you, I've seen people put lawn chairs near stops and turning over trash cans for seating at stops, just because we have an adequately provided shelter, in addition to some of the other elements like the solar panels to be able to provide electricity and heat and air in those shelters. So that's really good to hear. The other question that I had, you had a slide that talked about your fees, and there were numbers in the parentheses on that slide, and I'm not sure what that meant. So if someone could just kind of help me to understand that slide, it was, there was one number, and then there would be a different number in parentheses. were numbers in the parentheses on that slide and I'm not sure what that meant. So if someone could just kind of help me to understand that slide, it was, there was one number and then there would be a different number in parentheses. I don't know if that was a previous number?
I think those, so the number outside of the parentheses is the base fare and within the parentheses is a reduced fare.
Yeah. And what does that mean, reduced fare? For whom?
So if you're ADA eligible or a senior citizen, you are able to pay the reduced fare.
Okay. Thank you for that. And I think that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and Commissioner O'Connor and then Commissioner Schaefer.
Thank you. I'm really appreciative of the efforts to improve service equity. One of the questions I have is surrounding service dignity though. And I struggle as a guy that looks out his window of his business every day at a bus shelter, which is great and a fabulous amenity for our neighborhood, but oftentimes at almost every stop, you don't provide the resources needed to keep those stops clean for folks. You know, I see stops all around the city and there's no trash cans. So it's incumbent upon, you know, not only do your passengers have to stand in the garbage of others because they don't have a place to put it, but then it's incumbent upon the property owners and the business owners where those stops are located to pick up the mess every day. And, you know, the same goes for stops that are located in right-of-ways where they don't have concrete to stand in, so you have to stand in the snowbank or concrete or grass when it rains. You know, I'd really like to see some low-hanging fruit taken care of, you know. Big fancy bus stops are really nice, but, you know, baseline services at a lot of these stops would be vast improvements as well.
Commissioner O'Connor, I'm quite aware of what you're talking about and one of it is the fiscal constraints of being able to actually have additional staff so that we can put trash cans at stops. So what we've done is trash cans are at the shelters and there's trash cans in places where people are managing to maintain them. If they're not maintaining them properly, then we work with them and then if they're not consistently doing it, we have to remove it because we don't have the staff to do 1,600 bus stops. So if, long-term, if these are problems that people still feel need to be addressed, I have to go back to the board and add some money to the budget so that we have a way to maintain them. One of the things that I would recommend is that we start working on a system where we find sponsors for these shelters, people who are willing to support it, maybe even outside of the local business owner, maybe somebody else who thinks that the community in itself might benefit from it. I would say, you know, in your region, for example, it might not be the store next to it, but it might be some, either the Myon Corporation or it could be Rockford that really helps us out with that. So they kind of, in terms of reverse advertising for them, they're the ones who are actually maintaining, helping to fund the maintenance of it. And that's worked in other cities and this is something we're quite willing to explore.
It sounds like we need to pull together some partners to figure this out.
Yeah.
The neighborhood association seems like they would be a really good target to try to have those conversations with to start.
Exactly. And, you know, the East Hills Neighborhood is, that's a prime example. They've taken that over there and they've really done a lot of things to make sure that those bus stops and shelters that are in East Hills are taken care of that way and they've taken that voluntarily.
Because they have a business district, they can afford to pay for that.
So I think there's different ways we can address this issue still in the future. Right now, though, we are financially constrained to get the operations going.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Yeah. First of all, I just wanted to thank you for your work. I think the Laker Line is going to really kind of transform how you provide service and just wanted to pause there for just a minute and kind of, you know, talk about that in relation to the millage that's upcoming. I think when you look at the amount, excuse me, of students that are from our area, even from the six-city area that are Grand Valley students that will use that line, I think, you know, part of the challenge is to have a good network of service that works is you got to provide that baseline service that creates that cost. So I think looking forward to how we use and how we increase the ridership, which ultimately helps, to your point, the revenue and that fixed cost of service that's there, I think that's where the Laker Line overnight makes sense because to your point, you can't even fit everybody in peak times on there. So around that question, around that comment is a question about those six regions where you said that they saw increase in ridership over the last few years. Is that just due to growth that those cities had? Did they utilize technology, change routes? Was there anything around there that we can do similar to what you're doing on the Laker Line that could help us increase that ridership and revenue?
That is a challenge because most of what occurred in those six cities, they decided to reorganize their route structure in such a way that the urban core was maintained and the suburban fringes were diminished in ridership. And so that's a difficult one to attain. In other instances, there were some improvements, significant new improvements that they could put in, very rare, but they had availability of either increased funding and actually additional new services like light rail and BRT that caused that. So the ridership decline is a cause of our fare increase, which we had and other systems didn't have. But we didn't have it as badly as I thought it would be. And the second one is gas prices going to low levels. And so when they start coming back up, we would have the negative of having to pay more for fuel, but we'd, our ridership would be coming back. Long-term, that's not an issue for us because that's the whole point about CNG conversion, is that we are not going to be dependent on gas prices and diesel fuel. We're going to be dependent on a locally-produced CNG cost, which are always lower. And that CNG capability you see is benefiting the DASH because the city got CNG buses. And in the future, and with the relationship we have with the city, any CNG vehicles you have could be fueled at a different cost than our retail price. So we can...
And some cities are going all-electric buses as well, so...
Yeah, that might be, in 10 years, we might have to reconvert. You're right. That's a high cost right now for us in capital outlay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, final questions and then I'm going to move on because we have a full agenda still. Commissioner Lanier?
Yes, one quick question. So a couple of years ago, we had a lot of attention at our meetings connected to your contract negotiations. I'm just curious if things have been settled because we haven't had visitors.
Well, we've heard, we've heard only that the union is going to take a vote on something. And if it's a positive vote, then the board can take a positive vote and we can be concluded on that, so.
How soon is that vote?
We're working on it.
Okay.
Other than that, I can tell you that, yes, we are hoping that we hear correctly that there's going to be a vote taken that will be positive for us in the future.
Glad to hear that.
Yeah, I'll make sure y'all are updated, but it's continued to be a work in progress. And, yes.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Peter, thank you so much. Thank you for coming and doing this presentation. Two follow-ups, please send us the information on the line survey and we'll make sure that we're able to, all of us have a chance to participate and then we can also make sure that our residents know about that. And then secondly, I think we need to follow up on the conversation about maintenance at stops. And I'm wondering, City Manager, maybe if...
Part of our conversation.
Okay, and maybe Tom and I see James back there can be a part of that conversation too.
Well, thank you, Mayor Bliss, Commissioners.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for your hospitality.
All right, Commissioners, next, we have a brief presentation by our chief and the executive director of our Boys and Girls Club. That is Rick. If you two want to come on up, we're going to hear about the incredible work they're doing and also about the Pathways to Policing Program. So welcome. I know all of us are big fans of Boys and Girls Club and recently there was a nice newsletter about all the work that you're doing and the kids who are going out to camp. So I'll turn it over to you.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Welcome.
Mayor. Rick's going to get us started with an overview of the Pathways to Policing Program and we've brought some show and tell with us as well.
Great, we love show and tell.
These are kids?
Do the program already. Well, thank you so much again. Yeah, my name is Rick Heisman. I am the executive director for the Boys and Girls Clubs of Grand Rapids Youth Commonwealth. Very, very proud to be standing in front of each and every one of you today. You know, as you know, Grand Rapids Police Officers has served as positive role models for thousands of our kids in our clubs and camps since the GRPD Superintendent Frank O'Malley founded this great organization in 1938. And today, Boys and Girls Clubs of Grand Rapids Youth Commonwealth currently serves just over 3,000 club members and sees an additional 600-plus campers at Camp O'Malley. And of course, GRPD continues to play a vital role in the success of our organization. Today, we have Officer Mo, Officer Harris, Officer Cudney right behind me. These three gentlemen are in our clubs every day, serving as mentors to our kids. They are also running programs and most of all, building relationships with our kids and with the families. And we wanted to be able to leverage this unique relationship through the Pathways to Policing Program. You know, we want to be able to help provide a path for our members and our alumni to explore these career opportunities in law enforcement. You know, of course, we wouldn't be able to do it without the support of the Frye Foundation and of course, we couldn't do it without this man's leadership right here, Chief Rohenske. Like I mentioned earlier, you know, we've been doing this and being a part of youth development since 1938 and I truly believe over the last five years, we have taken a step up. This organization continues to do some great things within our community and I believe it really, you know, got things going with the city's gift of Paul I. Phillips back in June of 2012. We appreciate that gift. I think that has also allowed us to see more kids, more often, every day. And that's what we're about. You know, whether kids are coming in to get their homework done, going through our arts programs, our music programs, our sports programs, we're about creating opportunities for success. And that's another reason why we want to be able to launch this type of program to continue to fill the gap of need within our community, no matter what that might be, how the Boys and Girls Clubs can help support that. So we are so proud to be able to launch this and so proud to be able to stand up and tell you a little bit about it. I'll let Chief take it from here.
Commissioners, just to state what you already know, we're very proud of this program and what we're now initiating is Pathways to Policing, I think is a first in the nation in terms of the level of involvement that these young people have with the police department. So for us, we're hoping to obtain two goals and two goals that we've identified as a community as being extremely important to us, that diversifying the police department and improving police and community relations. So this will allow us to bring 13- to 20-year-olds into the police department fold, spend time with us on a level before that we just hadn't even envisioned. So we'll do ride-alongs, we'll have an opportunity to sit and take mock civil service exams, we'll go through interviews to prepare them for their future. So whether they choose a pathway in policing or whether they choose to go a completely different direction, we think this is going to make them stronger, more marketable and just better citizens. So we're going to ask them to take the lessons they learn and share them with their friends, be force multipliers, be advocates for the police department, the men and women wear the uniform and the good work that the Boys and Girls Club does every day.
That's great.
Are there any questions that we can answer for?
All right, Commissioners, questions?
That was a sales pitch.
This is exciting. You guys are smiling hard and I'm smiling hard. This is a really good thing. Chief, can you talk a little bit about how interested parties can enroll in the program? I think most of us probably are aware of how to get connected with Boys and Girls Club, but specifically to the Pathways to Policing Program.
Sure.
No, absolutely. Anybody can join. I mean, our membership fee is $5 a year. So if you come to the Boys and Girls Clubs, become a member for $5 a year and want to be a part of this program, we invite anybody who wants to be a part of that.
And anyone who can't afford the $5, just have them call me. I'll sponsor.
Got it. Thank you.
I think all of us would step up and do that.
Hold it, make sure you get that down.
Somebody's taking notes somewhere, I know.
Well, and that's a good...
Spring.
That's right. And I'll put a plug in because you do rely on community support for the great work that you do. You have fundraisers to help support the work. I know many of us have attended those and we give each year, but I'll encourage all of my colleagues to do that as well as anyone else in this community that wants to support the great work happening at the Boys and Girls Club.
Yes.
Thank you so much, Mayor Bliss. I appreciate you saying that. By the way, September 28th, we have the Be Great Tailgate. You're all are welcome. It'll be a great night. We have Nikki UTA, she's in charge of all of our development. Casey Stratton, our director of all of our programs, so I just wanted to give them a shout-out too. So thank you. Oh, and our board president, Dustin Hopps.
Thank you, thank you. And I'll add my thanks to the Frye Foundation.
Yes.
Really appreciate their support for a lot of the work that we do in our city, but especially for this.
Got one quick question.
Commissioner?
Do you have a, is there like a maximum capacity for the number of individuals who can't participate?
Great question.
I'm hoping that that'll be a challenge for us, Commissioner. We haven't identified a top-level capacity. I'm confident that regardless of what the number is, we'll be able to accommodate them. But I'd love to see that be one of our challenges moving forward.
Very good. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Chief, repeat the age again. Commissioner Kelly was wondering.
Between the ages of 13 and 20.
20, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. And thank you, thank you all of you for your work. Appreciate it. Thanks. All right, Commissioners, next. So I'm going to ask all of you to help spread the word about this program and encourage young people to get engaged and then also to support the great work happening at Boys and Girls Club. All right, next that will take us to our exciting website redesign update. It's Becky Jo Glover who is taking the lead on this important initiative.
So everybody knows, there are over 500 viewers right now watching your commission meeting on Facebook Live. That's pretty awesome. So, great job. Thanks, Greg, for your support on that.
Becky Jo, can you say that again? I'm not sure everyone heard.
Oh, sure. Just so everybody knows, we have over 500 Facebook Live viewers right now that are watching this meeting.
Oh, cool.
That's pretty awesome. Greg, thank you so much for your support on doing this and I know a lot of people in this room had recommended it, so we really appreciate you allowing us to do this and I think it's going to really put a different imprint on our city for social media.
I would point out, my limitation should not limit the organization.
That is, that's good. We've said that multiple times.
That's a kitchen drawer.
Actually, it is.
I'm teasing, I'm teasing, it's a joke.
So what we're going to do today, we're going to kind of do like, I'll say what the chief said, we're going to do a show and tell. Rather than them listening to me talk the whole time because I can talk really fast, my job is to keep everybody in line with the time because you do have a full agenda. So Greg, I apologize in advance if we go five minutes over, Greg. You also, you know, Becky doesn't come here without putting something up on the screen that goes, why is she putting this up here? Well, recently in a user tester session, a very poignant statement was made by one of our testers and she said, she's lived here all her life and we asked the question, how do you feel about our current website and then what would you like the new website to do? And what she said was very profound for all of us. I mean, it's just so simple, but it's the truth. She said, I know, all my life I've been going to the Grand Rapids, GRcity.us, and there's a lot of great things on that site. I just can't find them sometimes. And for the new site, I want you to recognize that I'm a homeowner, that when I go, I want to get everything I want as a homeowner. My son's trying to open a business. I want him to come to the site and be able to find out what do I do to open a business, but not go to 15 different sites. So again, it's a different way of looking at what we're doing, but everything we're doing, just as a reminder before we go into this, is we are testing everything with our community. If it doesn't work for our community, we are not, it doesn't work for anybody.
That's good.
And everything you're about to see with, I have got some great people here, they're all sitting behind me. See, you see, I can get them all right in order.
Yeah.
Those of you that know me know that. And you're going to be just hearing some things real quick. So having said that, we are finishing, I don't know if you all know it or not, we've been live with our new website, grandrapidsmi.gov since June 7th. We've done it very organically, we've done it very quietly. It hasn't meant that we haven't been getting a lot of hits on that page already. We've got over 4,600 people that have submitted on the services that we have online, of which over 44% are being done after hours and that's what a true digital city hall is. In the next four weeks, we've got some big deliverables to end Phase 1 and then we'll start Phase 2, but instead again of me talking about it, just let me give you a little introduction on something before we get the rest of them up here. On June 7th, thank you, Latoya and her team from Water. For the first time ever, we had a online form for our utility agreement, also known as Start New Water Service. And it's the first time ever in the history of Grand Rapids that we've had this. And before, you had to walk in, scan, email, all fax, whichever way you wanted to send this information over to Water. And so the majority of people would walk that service into downstairs at the Monroe storefront. So after looking at the data over the month, the last 10 weeks, I just wanted to show you what a difference this online service is making now. It's not by a miracle that it's working right, it's because we tested with our community, and we worked out all the bugs before we launched. And to date, for the last 10 weeks, we've had 105 people walk in to bring in that utility agreement. We haven't really reached them yet to say, "Hey, you can do that online." Last year was 500. That is a 79% decrease in the number of people that are walking in. Bigger yet is that line in yellow where it tells you that, "These are the people that have done this online in the last 10 weeks." These are our busiest months right now, June, July, and August, and it's just been incredibly smooth and everything that's been happening with it. And I can tell you, as I stand here in Latoya, you can also, Water, North 311, has had one complaint about this form not working, and one complaint, not one, about not being processed in less than a business day.
Wow.
Okay, and that is, I'm not making that up. Is that correct, Latoya? Latoya oversees it.
We know you're not making it up, Becky Jo.
We know Becky embellishes upon occasion, okay? So, but that is excellence at work, but it's only because, by the way, we did this very deliberately and methodically, that you all are allowing us to do this, to test every single service, to test every content. Having said that, in less than nine days, John, we are going to be launching our new payment application. Woo! John, go ahead. I'm going to stand if you see us 10 minutes.
Oh, you told me 70 seconds.
I got a cushion.
Stopwatch's on, John, go.
This screen is representative of actual screenshots from my phone. So, this is exactly how the website's going, or the pay-it channel's going to look. We've got a logo on there that looks very similar to what the Monroe level screens on the walls look like. As you can see, you can easily put in a parking ticket. It'll tell you your license plate and infraction, when it is due. It also, on the next one over, we've got the trash that tells me I have $20.40 in my account, and it asks me, "Do I want to auto reload?" I can set it up so that if it hits a $10 balance, it automatically adds $25 to my account. So, I should never miss a tip unless I somehow don't fund my bank account. I can add specific dollars if I want to, I can review my history. On the third screen to the right, you see my property tax bill. So, if I had a balance, it would tell me that there was a balance outstanding, and I could go and say, "Yep, that's mine, and I want to pay it." But it also has spots on each of these that you can go and view details, which is very important, because if I wanted more details about my property tax bill, if I click on that, it will jump to a site that gives me years' worth of data. Same thing with parking ticket. If I were to look at the details of my parking ticket, it will tell me the date it was issued, the date that the penalty doubles, the date the penalty will triple. The whole idea is to bring people into compliance, and we'd like to see people pay on time. And when they have this in front of them, then they can do that. And the nice thing about it is, once this is live, and I, this is just the test environment, when it's live, when I go in and I get started and I say, "Go to my Google account," any bill that I have will pop up on the screen. I don't have to search any specific one, but it'll show me the ones that I've registered for. So, as I'm a landlord, Commissioner O'Connor, I could have multiple property tax bills, multiple water bills, and I can pay it the same. And what you see on the screen here is what you'll see on your desktop computer as well. They're one in the same. There's no difference. So, when you jump from computer to iPad to your phone, it's the same look and feel. So, that's the importance of this, and we're in the final testing stages to launch on August 31.
Single sign-on, one sign-on for these four. This is only Phase 1. There'll be Phase 2 and Phase 3 on some other services we'll be bringing on for the city. Okay, now, we're going to leave this, and we're going to start showing some real-time things. Alex, you want to go ahead and come on up? We've been talking to you, if you all haven't seen the site, this is a site, this is, this picture was taken in one of our parks. We're very fortunate to be able to always show the greatness of our city, Grand Rapids, and this is what's out there right now. We've got 57 services out there. Could you go to My Neighborhood? We've been talking to you, we've been talking to you about this module called My Neighborhood, which, by the way, is still under testing. And what this does is, this allows a person, anybody in the community, a business owner, homeowner, or renter, to go in and take a look at what's around the community. We did ask our community what they wanted to see, and believe it or not, this is what they said. "I want to know my refuse and recycling days. I want to know who my commissioners are. I want to know where my parks are, my schools are. I want to know my voting precinct. I want to know about the construction projects in my area, and I want to know all the events that are going on around the city." And pretty much that, oh, by the way, they like cemeteries too. Haven't figured that one out yet.
Yeah.
Okay, however, so we are still in testing with this. We expect to go live by the end of next week, probably the week after, because we've got the big pay-it process going on. But we just wanted to show you a little bit about this, and also in just a moment, show you something that, we heard you on July 25th, say you wanted, when were the events going to be out there, and I think Yvette told you it's going to be soon. Well, because of what we heard you say and what everybody was talking about on the day, we've moved that up, and we're ready to show you how we're going to be launching the event, so it's pretty cool.
Nice.
Yeah, so, we did demo it yesterday for Tom, so Tom didn't see this. So, right now, you'll see there's an address in, Alex put an address in here, it says 28 Union. Go ahead and click it, Alex. And all of a sudden, all these things, because of our address, just drop into here. And some of the things you're going to see here are you, you'll see left navigation, if you could just show over here, left navigation. You can go over the icon, hover over an icon, you can see different things that are happening on the icon. And then if you go down, it tells you, "Thank you, James, for this information." It tells you your waste and recycling days. It tells you who your commissioners are, and it tells you who your mayor and your manager are.
Wow.
Okay, so, again, this is in test, because we've gotten feedback that people don't necessarily like the icons, and iconography is a big thing right now, especially in your phones. So, we're working through that right now, so we do expect to have that in place with the majority of people liking what we've put out there. These are new ones today, so another test will go out today. But bigger than this, I would like to bring up our special events people, because I think on July 25th, they were up here when they talked to you, and we've changed something around on the project plan, so we'll be launching this real soon on Phase 1, which will finish in the next four weeks, and I'll let them come up here and talk about it.
Ladies?
Good morning. As Becky Jo said, when I was here on July 25th, I talked to you about all of the new things that we have in the Office of Special Events, some of the improvements that we've made in the year, this past year, and how we were looking forward to even more new and greater things coming for our community. We listen to our community, we listen to our event planners, and we like to be responsive, and I believe that this is a product that is. Again, as Becky Jo said, we've tested it with the community, we'll continue to test it with the community, and I want Alex Melton and Kaylee Kramer to demonstrate to you what we're doing, because these are the ladies who have done the hard work.
Great. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Yvette. So, the events that we have in here are special events permitted events, and so we just wanted to show you that there is an online form for people to apply to get a permit for those special events. So, we have it full circle with the application for people to have the events, and then the events themselves online. So, here, what you can do is filter out to only show the events near you. So, if you enter an address, you're able to see if there's any events around you. Say it's a Friday night, and you want to know what's going on in the city. You could also look on the left-hand side navigation to see all of the events happening throughout the city. You're able to zoom in and out on the map as well, just to see the hotspots for where events are, and be able to zoom into those. And the cool thing about this is, a lot of the questions you get asked about events is, "Who is it for? What is it? Where is it? When is it? And how can I get there?" With this new format, it blows our old format out of the way. You're kind of left guessing and figuring it out for yourself. With this, it's all on one page, one click away, you can find all the event info you need. So, you can hover over it, you can see a little snapshot of it, how far away it is from where your location is, and if you want more details, you just click on it, and it brings you...
That's really cool, but that's hard to see on my phone, so how can I see more things?
You click on it. Side note, it's compatible with all devices, so if you're on your phone, a tablet, computer, it adjusts to the size of your screen. Once you click on it, it provides more information, and this helps the Office of Special Events support our events in more than what we have been able to do. We can put all of their event information on here, if they're having local food trucks, or if any local businesses are involved, and it even directly links to those local businesses, so you can find more information about them.
Oh, nice.
Thanks.
So, quick question about the events. So, then, if it's a private event, even if it's on a public, on public property, will they also be displayed, or how do you protect the event planner's private event from seeming to public?
Like a wedding.
Yes, that's a great, that is a great question, and that came up in almost all of our meetings. We're working on governance for that, because there is some sanctity in that. So, the question will be that we'll ask, the event planners ask, "Would it be okay to give the information out and/or publish?"
Publish or not, okay.
And it'll be a disclaimer right on the form, and then that's it, and it won't be on there. By the way, these are only city events that are, go through the Office of Special Events.
Sure, okay, okay. Thanks.
Yep, and so, for Relax at Rosa, it's a series, so the product allows us to enter in all of the series, showing the current or upcoming event first. And so, we're able to also show the entertainment lineup, go into their Facebook page to continue to promote local, and when you go down, you see all the occurrences of the event.
Great.
And then, what's really great about this product is that even if you come through here via My Neighborhood, or you search from the site, you're able to see a map, and it links directly to Google Maps, so that you're able to get directions to the event, see what's around, and be able to get driving directions.
But you know, there's a lot of events on that, I mean, there's four different series on there. How am I going to remember all those?
I'm glad you asked, Becky Jo. So, what you can do is go to this Add to Calendar, and you simply enter your email address.
Oh, wow.
And you can send yourself an invite. But since this is a series, you're able to select which occurrences you want to go to. So, if I just want to go to this week's and September 14th, I can select those and send myself an invite. It goes to my inbox, and then I'm able to add it to my calendar.
Awesome.
Ladies, on the bottom of that page, I saw these little tag-like things. What are those for?
All right, Becky Jo, you got to stop interrupting, you're running out of time.
That's my dining room.
So, we have many events, we try to accommodate all audiences as possible. With these tags at the bottom, it helps specify what the event is and who it may appeal to. So, there's community events, if it's at a city park or a street event. So, Alex, if you can click on that, you can see there's other options associated with it. So, if you're a mom looking for something to do with your kids, you can scroll down the category and find kid-friendly. And then you can also select free, if you're looking for something, you have a lot of kids, you want to bring them all, and don't want to spend a bunch of money. It will filter it out and show you all the events that apply.
A lot of kids.
Free and the kids, isn't it?
So, all of our events have the same look and feel, the same template that we use, and at the bottom, you can see that they are in chronological order, so you can go to the next event that's coming up, just to see what else is in that category and coming up next.
Nice. Great. Thank you. Thanks.
So, as you can see, a lot of work has gone into this. Again, we've gotten a lot of community feedback, we will continue to get community feedback, we welcome your feedback as well. I want to say a special thank you again to Becky Jo and her team, Alex Melton, and to Kaylee Kramer. It takes a lot of time to enter all these events into the system. Last month alone, in August, we did about 60 events, including weddings and equipment rental. We've got 50 scheduled for September, and this is just the beginning, you know, of September. So, it does take a lot of time to put this information in, and we appreciate your support.
Great, thank you. All right, so Becky Jo, I'm going to give you five minutes, and that's it. I know my colleagues probably have some questions, so Lou, I see you coming up, you're going to talk to us about how we're being a digital city hall for businesses.
The only thing I want to say about this, this was a module that did not come with the product, but because of Lou's insight and our discovery sessions with Mighty, this is a new module that Open Cities has added for everyone to repurpose and use.
Great. Awesome.
We should charge for that.
All right, so, I'll be brief. The Development Center is really the, it's the pilot department for what every department is eventually going to have to go through. So, that is the conversion of all the content that's going to be on the new site to the new site. So, of course, some is being left behind, but there's a lot of work that needs to happen to get all the departments into the framework of the new site. So, there are services, so this idea of services already came packaged with the product, and so you saw, for example, the special event permit a moment ago was a service, and all of the Development Center permits are also services. So, think building permits, temporary use permits, things like that. But what we were thinking about as we developed this is, many activities require multiple services. So, if one is adding onto a building, one service isn't enough. Often, there are a dozen services that need to be obtained in order to do that. So, the GR Digital Team talked with Open Cities, the vendor, worked with Mighty, and what was created is this service guide that you see in front of you, this template, which is available for other types of services, but also is something that can be expanded on within the Development Center for different types of projects. So, you can see at the top, there are these different phases that one would go through, in this case, planning and permitting a commercial building project. So, we want to, we want to structure this in terms of intuitive phases, that someone who's not familiar with our processes can come in and understand that they need to go through these in sequence and what's involved in each. So, Alex is clicking through them, and these link off to different types of services, so from this guide back to the services. So, if we go on to step 5, then you can see that we have lots of resources, like planned checklists, and then on step 6, we have application forms, and if you click on one of those, that takes you to the service. So, you know, you can see that we have these four tabs up at the top of each service, because we want to provide people with multiple channels to interact with us, and this is where a lot of the work happens. So, the Development Center has 24 services at present that have been published, we're going to have at least another six. And think of six times these four channels, so that's where a lot of the work happens in terms of writing up something that is intuitive for the public, for people who don't interact with these all the time, and includes all of the appropriate links. So, Becky Jo's been making me nervous.
The thing is, what you're not seeing on here is departmental names, you're seeing services and types of audiences. The homeowner wants for renovation, you want commercial buildings, so you aren't going to see a lot of departmental on there, it's all about our audiences.
Right.
A renter, a homeowner, and so forth. Thank you.
Lou, can I ask you a quick question? So, did you get feedback? I see Josh is in the audience from the chamber, so I'm curious, have we done some user testing with businesses, developers, and got their feedback on this?
So, that is next week, so the digital team is conducting that, and there has been feedback obtained on some of our residential type of services already.
Great. Thank you. Lou, thank you for your work.
And I'll get out of your way, because I know you've got a big...
We do have more to get to.
Last thing, we just want to make sure you know is that this month, again, the next four weeks, because I'm trying to get out of here, thank you, we are going multilingual. The entire site will be multilingual. There's toggle buttons. This is the premier application for Google translation. It's a higher level than Google Translate, you see on the website. And what it does, it takes everything and puts it in the exact priority way that we have it on our website. So, we can put any language on here. Right now, what we're testing for Spanish is the South American Spanish, because there's Castilian Spanish over in Spain. But, you know, the people that speak here Spanish normally go the South American, so we're testing that to see how the translation is. And then the last thing we would like to let you know is that after, this finishes And then the last thing we would like to let you know is that after, this finishes in four weeks, all these things we just showed you, we start phase two, which is our departmental transition. And we can send you this presentation. I'm going to get out of your way. However, the one thing I do want to let you know, everything we're building can be put into digital packages and sent out for, I know one of the things we've heard from you all, new homeowners, new renters, what do they need? So, everything is done for our audiences that we serve here in the city.
All for you.
I am telling you. Before I'm done serving, that is going to happen.
I told her she had a deadline of eight more years.
I do have to give, if I could, just one more thing.
Yes, Becky Jo, please. One more.
We've been working with Darlene, and we're really excited about these services for Darlene. We're doing two things. The boards of commission, 61 pages long behind the scenes, but our residents and the people that want to be on the boards and commissions don't need to know that. Of course, what we're doing, everything we do with Darlene, we're also making dashboards. I'm just showing you. We know exactly where, who's there and what board they're serving on.
I love it.
Second, we're piloting here in September, our first business license with Darlene and the Snow Flowers online, and we're really excited. Thank you so much, Darlene, for all your support.
Yeah, thank you. So, commissioners, I want to say a couple of things. One, it's also a priority to me to get our meeting agendas and minutes available in different languages. And so, I know Darlene and Becky Jo are actively working on that. And then, secondly, I want to say, I know that this has been a huge team effort. A lot of people, several of you in the audience today, as well as many others, have worked on this. So, I want to say thank you. I know this has been a lot of time and energy, and so, thank you.
And we appreciate your patience, because if we do this right one time, we don't have to do it again. And that's everything we're doing, so we appreciate it. Greg, thank you so much, and the support of all the staff in the city, allowing us to do this and letting the users tell if it works or not.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Becky Jo. Commissioners, any final questions, thoughts? We'll continue to get updates on this, and we'll continue to spread the word. Please keep, let us know. I mean, we're really excited to get this pay at launched, and we will gladly push that out to our community as well. Thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
And first, a compliment. Yvette, this was for you. I heard last week from an event planner, somebody who had an event, that they were very impressed with how it was a one-stop shop. So, they were mandated to come in, but everybody was there, and they got everything done at the same time. So, thank you for that. And I know we didn't see that piece of it, but I assume that that's going to be all online as well.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, commissioners, we are now going to get to our action items. And so, we'll start with a resolution approving acquisition of MDOT property and trunk line turnback agreement. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Support.
All right. So commissioners, we heard briefly about this last week when we were hearing about Area Four and Five. And so, I'll turn it to Eric. And I know we have our, some of our MDOT partners with us in the back, so I want to say welcome. Thank you for being here and for all of your support and work in our city. Eric?
Thank you, Mayor. So, yes, we did start talking about this last week, and what this does is start the formal process of accomplishing the turnback. And so, in the memo, are listed the turnback streets and also the terms of the turnbacks. So, you can see that we'll be getting back from MDOT, Division Oaks, parts of Division, parts of Oaks, Weston, Granville, Franklin, Leonard, Turner, Scrivener, West Fulton, and a couple of bridges in the future. And we've worked out the terms for this. So, MDOT, under the turnback arrangement, is, has this policy of fighting for the maintenance of the facility for the next five years. So, working with Rick DeVries, who is also here, I think, has calculated the value of that. And then, we will use that cash value to accomplish the acquisition of the land required for the Area Four and Five development. Then, we will then sell that property and take that, those dollars and put that in back in the street capital fund. So, this turns out to be, the consideration is cash plus the land, which works out quite well for us. And we get the streets back, which means that we now have, we will have jurisdiction over how they are used, or more jurisdiction. And that will allow us to help accomplish community objectives. So, what this resolution would do is authorize us to proceed with rapid pace to move this forward. And you would have an MOU that would come before you at some point, and then an actual contract. Any questions?
Commissioners, questions? Commissioner Schaefer?
Yeah, just, my first question is, as long as the, around the local control. So, when we looked at Truck Route on Granville Avenue as one, this is something that would allow us to basically reroute that and work through it, or does, or do we not get all? We do, okay. Okay. And then, around that too, I know that Rick and his team have graded every street in the city and for what maintenance work. Is this, is this kind of an even footing for us in the city and fit with our plan of the 70% to good and fair? You think this will kind of be a wash for that, or a net gain? Or what do you think in the end we get out of that?
Well, actually, so we're acquiring more streets than we had in the original plan. So, that's, you know, that works against us. We're getting some cash to help pay for those streets. That works for us. And then, long-term, we've had additional dollars in the plan, then more dollars have come into the plan than we expected. So, the transportation package that was approved by the Michigan Legislature and signed by the governor actually provides more resources than we had before, than we had estimated. And then, the income tax revenues are higher than we had projected. So, I think, and in the end, it's all going to work out well, and we also have this advantage of having local control.
Great. Thank you. Commissioners, other questions, comments?
No.
All right. With that, I will call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It carries. Thank you. All right. Next, that will take us to a resolution establishing an obsolete property rehabilitation district pursuant to PA 146 of 2000 for IA 840 LLC at 840 Ottawa Avenue. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Support.
All right. Kara's out of town, so thank you for filling in.
Of course. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. This is a resolution. This and the next one are related to the same project. This is a request for a 10-year obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate for IA 840 LLC, which is affiliated with integrated architecture, for the property at 840 Ottawa, which is in the Monroe North area. The subject property is 13,600 square feet. It was constructed in 1920. It's been largely vacant for the last 10 years. The city assessor has inspected the building, and it does qualify as functionally obsolete. The applicant is currently located in the city of Kentwood and will be moving 50 jobs to the city of Grand Rapids initially, or sorry, 52 jobs, with average wage of $42.39. They intend to hire eight new employees over the next two years. The project is located in the Smart Zone. The DDA and the Monroe North Tax Income Finance Authority has been approved by all of those boards and has also been supported by the Business Association and by the Neighbors of Bell Network out.
All right. Thank you. So commissioners, we had a public hearing on this at our last meeting. We didn't have any significant feedback. It was supported, as John said, by the Business Association as well as the Monroe North Tepa. Any questions, comments?
Just a comment, that it's great to see this building finally used. It's been sitting empty and dilapidated for some time.
Yeah. Yeah, I drove by, it's in pretty rough shape. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It carries. All right. Commissioners, resolution number six is a companion item. It's a resolution approving a 10-year obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate pursuant to PA 146 of 2000 for this same project. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Support.
All right. Any final questions or comments? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It carries. All right. Next, we have a resolution setting a monthly fee for Ionia Avenue on-street monthly permit parking. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Support.
All right. Mr. Nairmore, you want to tell us about this? You actually have, I think you're up next as well.
Yes, ma'am. Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Commissioners. So, the first item this morning is actually something, as you're well aware of in my 18 months here, so parking has been a continual conversation topic around the city, as we know, we're growing to meet a lot of the challenges as a growing city. So, our department's really trying to think very creatively about how to dive into some of those solutions for some of these things. So, one thing that we have been talking about is, you may remember in December of this past year, we actually came to this body for approval to establish a park mobile-only parking zone in a couple areas throughout the city. So, the first area in which we did implementation was along Ionia Street, just north of 196 into the North Monroe area. Shortly after implementing that, it went from being full on almost every day to being barely, very, not very utilized in any way, shape, or form. So, we're actually trying to capitalize on this as an opportunity. So, what we are asking for approval is to actually establish this as a permit parking area on the east side of the street and still leave the west side of the street as available for visitor parking concurrent with the park mobile designation that it has. And our belief is this will add approximately 150 on-street parking spaces that are greatly needed in the inventory, and it's already served by the Dash North Route and can circulate into downtown to other businesses. So, this is sort of our first attempt at some of the near-term supply issues that are served with public transportation, but provide a benefit to our parking customers. So, this was discussed, and the recommendation is coming from the Mobile GR Commission, and it was also presented at the most recent meeting of the Economic Development Project Team.
Great. Thank you. All right. Commissioners, questions about this?
No.
Commissioner?
Just a reminder that the Dash now is a short wait of seven to eight minutes instead of 20 minutes, so it's very convenient. And yes, we've had a lot of parking demand, as we know, and this will be one more piece of that puzzle. It's so close to downtown, and I think as more amenities appear in that neighborhood, it'll also be nice for people who want to maybe shop or eat or whatever in that neighborhood.
Yeah. I agree. So, thank you. Thanks for responding to this quickly. Any other questions or comments?
No.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It carries. All right. Next, that will take us to a resolution approving monthly parking program in our neighborhood lots. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Support.
All right. So, Josh, you want to tell us about this? This is another work in progress that has been in the works for a while?
Yes. So, this is another way in which we're trying to look to, more creatively, kind of look at how we manage parking. So, we have all these wonderful assets throughout many of our neighborhoods, and the majority of the neighborhood parking lots are free and unregulated or unrestricted parking. But what we're seeing is downtown is not the only place in the city that's experiencing a tremendous amount of growth, both residential as well as business. So, we've been approached by a number of businesses wanting to lease space in these neighborhood lots, but currently, we don't have a program or we don't have the authority, and we have not set a rate to allow us to be able to do that. So, in order to respond to some of the growing businesses, what we're asking for is the approval for, over the next year, to have, to set aside up to 30% as a maximum in each of these neighborhood parking lots for a monthly permit rate for business customers or for anyone who wants it, Monday through Friday, from 8:00 to 5:00 p.m. And this rate would be $48 a month. And the critical piece to mention here is, we're asking for this as a blanket approval for all of these neighborhood lots to report back, but we would not do any of this until we've actually done the corresponding outreach when we get a request for a permit with the Neighborhood Association, the Corridor Improvement District, and any of the corresponding areas that might be impacted by this. Part of the big reason for us doing this is, we've been auditing all of our facilities to make sure that they are all full cost recovery. And so, we do pay for a lot of these lots for maintenance from landscaping, snowplow removal, lighting, et cetera. And so, we're trying to help get back some of the increase in costs so that these facilities can kind of stand on their own. So, this is sort of our phase-one approach to meet some of the challenges that we're experiencing in the growing neighborhood business districts. And another critical piece of this too is, we're trying to do this to mitigate from businesses having employees park in the neighborhoods, which can exacerbate some of the neighbor business relations in some of those growing business districts. So, this is a, this is a solution that we believe will have sort of a short-term effect, and then we can report back regularly to the Mobile GR Commission about how we're seeing requests for permits in these corresponding facilities.
Great. Thank you. Questions, Commissioners?
Yeah.
So, I'll start with Commissioner Lanier, then Schaefer.
Thanks, Josh. I, when I was reading this, I was curious to know, I think, was it 30%?
Yes, ma'am.
So, how do we come up with that number? And would all lots have that level of capacity? I was, I was thinking that perhaps in some lots, it may be more, and in other lots, less, based on, you know, how it's being utilized currently?
And that's a great question. So, a lot of our lots, the primary uses that we see, and a lot of them are in the evenings and on the weekends. And so, one of it is, we're actually going to be able to monitor this, to get sort of real-time count information, to see if they are exceeding that. And if we do find that we have an exceedance for that, then we would come back to ask and work through the Mobile GR Commission to maybe increase the amount of permits. But we also want to be very cautious to make sure we have the visitor parking that's available for some of the other businesses that maybe need the short-term visitor, higher turnover associated with that, but also allowing for the long-term for some of the businesses that want to move into some of the neighborhood business districts. And part of it too is, we're seeing it particularly in the Wealthy Street corridor. You'll notice a lot more businesses that are locating out there. But we also want to do this to be a little bit more proactive, so as we see more business growth in Madison Square and some of those other areas, that we have the ability to do this as well. Because one of the feedback we've received from businesses is, if they're interested in this, it's a three-month process for us to review it, bring it to the Mobile GR Commission, and then bring it to City Commission. So, this would allow us to be a little bit more quick and nimble for providing this asset to businesses if they're going to stay there or if they want to locate there.
Okay. That's good to know. And then, the follow-up is, what about the placement of the spaces? Because we want to make sure that those who are visiting short-term would have access to probably closer spots than employees from businesses who would be there, you know, park their cars and be there for several hours.
And that's exactly how we're going to look at it, is trying to, the ones closer to the street and locating more of the longer term, maybe a little bit on the backside. And it'll be more facility-by-facility specific. Like, a great example is the Barth Lot, which is on, which is just north, or excuse me, south of Wealthy Street. A lot of people don't know that facility even exists. There is a sign, but it's directly behind a whole series of businesses. So, that's an example of a facility in which we think that a program like this and locating it in a way in which maybe it's in the middle, so you can access each of the side streets and still all of the local businesses in the district.
Great. Thank you. Great. Thank you.
Yeah, that was along the same lines. I just, I just want to make sure that we're not having an impact to being able to, if we're seeing those lots being used heavily, because they do impact the ability for the business district to grow and thrive. And sometimes, so wherever that max number threshold is, you know, it's just, it sounds like you already figured that out. So, I don't need to pile on, but just a concern that I had around just making sure that we keep the neighborhood business districts available to park. Thanks.
And I know, many of us know this, Josh has really led the charge on being more data-driven and having data and being really flexible at analyzing that data quickly and making changes as needed. So, I anticipate you'll be doing that with this program as well.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any other questions, comments? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It carries. Thanks, Josh. All right. Next, that will take us to a resolution authorizing certain special events subject to Chapter 53 of the City Code. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
All right. Ms. Yvette Pittman, you want to tell us about this?
Absolutely. So, we are excited. You all received that special events calendar. That comes from Kaylee Kramer, and I wanted to make sure that you do have the opportunity to meet Kaylee Kramer. She is an assistant in our office, and she's more than that. She helps us get things done in that office of special events. So, we have 18 events that are asking for items to be suspended for the month of September, but we do have well over 50 events that will occur in the month of September. In August, we actually had about six weddings, and we also had filming that included GM, Ford, Gladiator Bikes, and Pure Michigan. So, we've been very busy and very excited in our office.
All right. Commissioners, questions?
All right. This is good.
All right. Now, we'll be able to find them on our new website.
Absolutely. We're so excited about that.
All right. I will call the question, then. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It carries. All right. Next, that will take us to a resolution. Let's see. Authorizing Art Prize 2017 to take place within designated boundaries in the city of Grand Rapids from September 20th until October 8th.
So moved.
So moved.
All right. Yvette, you want to tell us about this?
Absolutely. So, this is a resolution that we have done in previous years where we are authorizing all the boundaries of Art Prize. You will notice that this year, we have expanded some of the boundaries. So, we have the normal three-mile radius. You have maps that are attached, hopefully, in your packets. We have Rumsey Street Project, which is not site-led this year. It's just Rumsey Street Project. And we have the Frederick Meyer Gardens and Gerald R. Ford International Airport.
Great. Thank you. Questions, Commissioners? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It carries. All right. And that goes with the next one, which is a companion, and this is a resolution approving artist and venue hosting agreements for Art Prize.
So moved.
Support.
All right. Any questions about this? Again, city manager, you want to add anything on this?
This would authorize me to sign the specific venue agreements when the city is the venue.
Great. Any questions, commissioners? All right, and we heard about the great exhibit that will be at our Cold Brook. So hopefully, all of you can get over there to see the fire-throwing. Family-friendly fire-throwing. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It carries. All right, next that will take us to a resolution establishing the Property Assess Clean Energy Program, which is also referred to as PACE, in the city of Grand Rapids. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Support. All right, so commissioners, we heard about this program actually a few times now. Had a public hearing at our last meeting. Asante, you want to tell us about this?
First time here, I'm glad to be here.
Good to hear.
I am here to talk about PACE, which is the Property Assess Clean Energy Program. It's an opportunity for you to reach your goals when it comes to District 2030, items that are laid out in the Sustainability Plan, the Transformation Plan. So this is an opportunity for you to reach some of those goals. What it would be is the property owner and a lender, they come into an agreement where it would be a special assessment. It's between the two of them. The only time that the city would get involved if that special assessment isn't paid. There's no cost to the city, no bonds will be issued. It's pretty straightforward. Eric DeLong, Amy Snowbuckner, the Treasurer and Economic Development Department, they all worked on this. So it's up for you to adopt or not adopt.
All right, thank you. And commissioners, as we said before, this is a really critical tool that will not only assist developers, but also even current companies to be able to move towards more energy efficiency. So aligned with our goals around sustainability and environmental sustainability, and as Asante said, aligned with the 2030 district.
And it's also can be used for housing, so.
Yes.
Another positive about this program, lower electricity costs and heat costs.
Yes, indeed. Any questions? All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It carries. All right, commissioners, and this next one is, again, another companion item. This is a resolution approving City Commission policy 900-54, Property Assess Clean Energy or PACE Program. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Support.
All right.
On the agenda, I have access there. That's my library background, so please forgive me that I said "access," on the agenda. So I don't know if the city clerk can change that if needed. Just something to know. So this is a policy for your consideration to help us understand how staff will carry out this PACE program. A lot of this work is going to rely on the Sustainability Manager, who begins on September 11th. We worked through it. I don't know if you have any questions. It's pretty straightforward. Council tells us that we do not have to have a hearing when these things are set up because it's an agreement between the property owner and the lender. There's no need for an additional hearing once you decide that a particular property is eligible to be this district. Again, this reaches out towards your goals that I've talked about earlier. One thing that still needs to be figured out is the exact cost. My understanding is that there's an omnibus of fees that is given to you for your consideration once a year. When that comes around, we'll have, we'll be more clear on what the fees should be. But for right now, it's $250. The city, again, is not going to be responsible for any costs. It's $250 plus any cost that may occur is what's in this right now. So I don't know if you have any questions, concerns?
All right, commissioners, any questions or concerns? All right, thank you. I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It carries. All right, next will be a resolution authorizing an amendment to the Municipal Partnership Act contract between the city of Grand Rapids and Kent County. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
All right, and I see our partners from the county here, Matthew and Jacobs, or I should say from Asset. So who is here to talk about this? City manager? Okay.
After a few years of discussion and negotiation, in fact, this was one of the last things that former Mayor George Hartwell took on personally, was to revision the work of the Community Action Agency. And so in an agreement with Kent County and Asset, the administration of the new Community Action Agency will move from Asset to Kent County. Almost everything else remains the same. That is, the city's funding responsibility or commitment to this organization, as well as the city's positions on the governing board. Everything will largely remain the same. It's really a change of aligning this organization with other work that the county does, and I feel comfortable, after going through this agreement several times at this point, that this is in the best interest of this program in the long run, in the best interest of the citizens of Grand Rapids.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, any questions? I feel like we've also talked about this quite a bit over the years, and I know there were still a few kinks to work out. I'm assuming this is the final.
Yes.
Piece of the puzzle.
All the kinks have been removed.
Kinks have been worked out. Any questions or comments? Commissioner?
I guess a thank you to Jacob for all of the hard labor that you put into all these changes, the regional consolidation and so on. So thank you for your work. Good to see you and Matt here today. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Jacob, Matthew, do either of you want to add anything? You're welcome to come on up. Matthew, I want to also say thanks for all of your work on this and all of your work at the county. You're a key partner.
Can I quickly say this, Mayor? As a member of the CAA Board, I think we have, you're right, Mayor Hartwell was on the board at that time and kind of started some of the many consolidation discussions that Asset has gone through over the past couple of years. And I think with this one, the legwork that Matthew and the county and their willingness to take that on and scrutinizing numbers and things of that nature to make sure that if they were to take it on, that it would thrive in the county, I thought was really beneficial. And for us to still have access to oversight is beneficial for the city of Grand Rapids. But I think we found the right home for it. And I think, I also wanted just to say to Jacob, thank you for your vision and wisdom to know that these types of discussions needed to take place so that we can right-fit things where they rightfully belong. And so as Asset has grown, you know, this probably wasn't the best fit as it continued to grow.
Thanks. Thank you.
So thanks for saving the best for last. Give it a breeze, but.
Then there's that. Actually, we have one more thing to talk about.
I didn't know. I thought we were done after this. So obviously, some of you know that I'm a resident of Grand Rapids, and this is a lot of conversation and frankly, work that kind of led up to this over two and a half years of discussions going back to Hartwell. And really, being that the two divisions that we have, Community Action Programs and Michigan Works, Michigan Works grew exponentially as we looked at consolidating overhead and cost savings, looking at cost savings from the administrative level. So merging with four different Michigan Works agencies, our region is now seven counties, including certainly Kent County, which still is very important to me, living in Kent County. And then with Michigan Work, with Community Action Programs, it's really about preserving it to local, like the war on poverty or the fight on poverty certainly, you know, it's very different in Kent County than it is in Alleghen or Berry County or Ionia or Montcalm. And so it was really about keeping those services local and not necessarily regionalizing or expanding those regions to cover broader territory. And then I think the opportunities arose with blending and merging with community development block grant programs that still serve a similar population as it relates to needs. So it truly is that one-stop shop, much like you were talking about your website being that one-stop shop. It truly is a one-stop shop, and services will be provided out of 121 Franklin, which certainly we appreciate the city's support, not only for Franklin, but for the West Side Complex, which helps provide more dollars going into the hands of our residents. And so we really saw it as a unique opportunity, and I think that, you know, because of our leadership and because of our board and Commissioner Lanier and Commissioner Allen, both serve on our board, as well as Commissioner Kelly serves on the Advisory Governing Board, which is very helpful since she had served on our board prior to that. So we've had some great leadership. Elizabeth White's been great to work with from legal. She helped us with the original transition, with writing up all the legal documents and kind of helped with this as well. So we certainly appreciate the amount of work that's gone into it and the conversations. And I think we have a good plan for services to continue without being disruptive to the residents that we serve and that receive those services.
Yeah.
Yep.
Great. Questions, commissioners?
I'd like to make one last comment, and I think the other piece is the care that has gone into making sure that the employees, as they're transitioning from one organization to the other, should be commendable to the two of you for all of your hard work in negotiating and things of that nature, too, because we wanted to make sure that we were taking care of those who have kind of served for a lot of years. So thank you for that.
It's very helpful to continue the services to the residents, too, because we're able to transition the majority of them. Couple of them are retiring, but, you know, with over 50 years of experience in Community Action Programs, for one person alone, I think that she was ready to retire.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you for your work. And Matthew, anything to add? I know we all appreciate our partnership with the county, and we continue to see that grow over the years.
We just want to say thanks for the city's support and ongoing support. This has been a good process, I think, throughout. We've learned a lot as a county, we've learned a lot as Asset, the city, and this is the kind of collaboration we want to continue to work for. So thanks a lot.
Thank you.
You.
Thanks, and thank you for your work. Always nice having a data analyst help.
Yes.
All right, so commissioners, I will call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It carries. All right, commissioners, one final thing I want to talk about today. We don't have to, it's not an action item, but I want to have a public conversation about next steps. All of us have had a chance to think about and to really soak in and process the fact that our city manager will be retiring. So the city manager and I are still talking about some final things that we'll be thinking through when it comes to transition. And what I've been talking to all of you about is coming up with a plan for a process to move forward with the replacement of our city manager. So I want to share with.
That's possible.
I knew you were going to say that.
I know, I know. So commissioners, I want to talk about a couple of things and just get a little bit of feedback and then hopefully move forward after today. So having spent quite a bit of time looking at other processes, really reviewing what we have done in the past, many of us have sat through a number of appointments, both for appointed officials as well as to fill some of the seats around this table. And then we have some examples from the counties going through an executive search. GRCC finished up going through an executive search. Many of you have had the experience, having served on the school board. So in looking at all of that and then having additional conversations with all of you, I would like to propose a number of things. I've also had a chance to meet with Mary Beth Jelks, our HR Director, and she has provided some valuable insights and thoughts about the process and ways that the HR Department can assist us in this process as well. So I would like to propose a few things. First, I'd like to get a RFP out to identify a search firm. Our procurement office will assist with that. Amy over there will help in finalizing that, as well as doing a matrix that we can review once bidders come in. And then the HR Department has offered to assist in creating a candidate profile. They've done this in the past for other positions, including our fire chief and our police chief. The process for a candidate profile would include two things. It would include having community meetings, as well as an electronic opportunity for people to complete a survey and provide feedback that then we could aggregate and gather together. And that could be done concurrently while the RFP is open for search. We could also move forward on getting input from the community on a community profile or a candidate profile. Next, I would come back in front of this full body to decide on who, what search firm we would like to utilize. And then that work would really kick us off into the crux of what we need to do together. But we would do that in partnership with a search firm that has expertise in identifying and recruiting high-level executives for a position such as this. Next would be to promote the position and get the word out, and then again, working with the search firm to do that recruitment piece. And then we, together as a body, and again, some of this will likely change. I want to be careful not to solidify too many of the details at this point, because I do believe that a search firm will be able to give us ideas as well and how to improve the process and what that process would look like. So again, I want to kind of put out there an idea and a draft of a process, but just knowing that it'll be really solidified once we have a search firm on that we can work with. And I'm assuming someone that has, a firm that has worked with other cities to identify a city manager. But then we would participate in the first-round interviews, and then after we have vetted down the pool of candidates to a smaller pool, we would embark on a really robust community process to get input, and that would include a number of things. We would obviously do city tours with the candidates. We would have roundtables with a number of stakeholders, including our faith community, our business community, neighborhoods, public partners. We would also make sure there's roundtables for city employees. And then a community forum, a larger community forum, similar to what we've done in the past, where the community would be able to ask questions as well as provide feedback. And then the final interview would be around this table with the seven of us. And then we would provide, again, for public comment before a final decision is made. So again, we, I'm really hopeful we can do this in four to six months. I've looked at other timetables. I think that's a really reasonable timetable. But again, needing, I think it's, we really need the search firm in place to walk through what a feasible timeline is, based on their expertise as well as their capacity. So I want to get some feedback on that from all of you and see if there's anything, any other key elements that we're missing that we want to make sure are included. And then we will work in partnership with our HR Department and procurement to identify a firm to work with us. All right, so questions, comments, commissioners? Commissioner Schaefer?
Yeah, Mayor, I just think overall that the process you outlined is good. I think keeping it mostly within this body, as this will be a direct hire, is important. But I also think, just one thought around that is, when the DGI went out, they had stakeholder interviews as well, and it might be good for each of us to think about having someone that we can go to to kind of be a good check on that throughout the process, too. But, you know, along that, too, I think that one important thing to relay back to the firm, too, which we'll have more time to kind of talk through, but also how do we kind of grow our own and work with those that are within our organization, too. I think that's part of our process. We haven't talked through that, but working through that is key. And then what you said, you know, the timeline isn't set. So I think figuring out what we need to do on that interim basis and period, I guess I just wanted to state that that's also important as we talk through it, too. I think that with whosoever here is going to also have a learning curve of, you know, six to nine months beyond Greg, you know, being here and through our budget cycle. So leaning on staff or, you know, and I don't know who of staff is going to apply or not, but just wanted to kind of throw out there that whole process and making sure that we kind of respect that. And even the work that Eric DeLong and others have done, if they want to help us bridge that gap, is helpful. I just want to throw that idea out there, but we'll find that out as we get more firm on a timeline, in my mind, so.
Thank you, Commissioner. That's a very good point. So city manager and I are talking about that as well, and once we have some ideas for a transition plan, we'll make sure that that's shared with the full commission. At this point, city manager will be with us at least till the end of the year, maybe, likely, a little bit longer. And so we'll be able to work with the city manager to think through a lot of those transitions, identify what he's currently working on that can be kind of shifted to somebody else during the interim, as well as identify a plan for who will lead the budget process, knowing that the city manager won't be here with us through the entire budget process, which will be done by June of next year.
I'll be got, too, but I'm sure it's not right.
So commissioners, know that that is a conversation. City manager already started thinking about that last week. We have a few ideas. He and I will talk through that a little bit more, flesh out some plans, review that with all of you, and then we'll have a good plan in place. We want to make sure that nothing falls through the cracks, and that's a priority to our city manager as well. And so he'll work with us on that. But thank you for bringing that up.
Three of us.
Commissioner Kelly, then Lanier, then O'Connor.
I just want to add to what Commissioner Schaefer said about there being a learning curve in this time. I appreciate the fact, Greg, that you're willing to stay on and work with us through that, you know, for several months, that, so when somebody's.
Let's be clear, it's not a forever.
No, it's not.
It's indefinable.
It's not forever. We realize that, and the learning curve will go on. But with that in mind, I would love to have some thought put into you, city manager, about how we do make sure that things don't fall through the cracks. When there are these transitions, sometimes we, as commissioners, don't know who the go-to persons should be, so perhaps we can have some conversations about that and maybe leading up to the time when you are finally gone, and we know it won't be forever, that we can continue to have those monthly ward meetings. I miss them. We've had some that haven't been there, and there are issues that I know that I want to talk to you about, and we just haven't had that time. So please consider that.
So Commissioner, thank you for putting an exclamation mark on that. We will work on a couple of things. One is we'll make sure we have a really clear transition plan with, again, the items that the city manager is currently working on and who will take those on until someone is in his office, and they have a strong foundation of learning. The other thing that Greg and I have talked about is onboarding, so we want to make sure that we have a good plan in place for onboarding. So I've asked the city manager to think about, you know, what was really helpful for him, and, you know, what are some things we want to think about to make sure that we have a really good onboarding and training process as well. And so we'll be thinking through that together. And I think it's, again, I've said this to Greg, I'm not sure I said it publicly, but I really appreciate his commitment to making sure it's a smooth transition and that whoever takes the reins after him is well-prepared to carry on the work that he's done. So. All right, Commissioner Lanier, then O'Connor?
Yes, so I think the process that you've outlined, Mayor, is a really good process. I have a question regarding the RFP and what would be included in that. So in the event that we hear back from the community regarding the candidate profile that will be created, that they're interested in a national search or that they're interested in a local hire, shouldn't that be a part of the RFP? Because depending on which firm we use, maybe tied to the type of candidate or at least where the candidate is found. If people have more experience, let's say statewide, in doing this work, then maybe we lean more towards that firm if we have a candidate profile that says they want someone local, which I would define as within the state. So should we reverse those two steps? You know, I recognize that time is of the essence, and we're trying to get this done four to six months, but I also think about the, that there's a tie, a direct tie from what that candidate profile looks like and the people who will be doing the work to fulfill what that candidate profile is outlining.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner, and maybe that's a conversation for all of us. My intent has always been to do a national search and to make sure that we have expertise with a search firm who is able to do that. And again, not that that negates anyone local or even from the state as rising up as the top candidate, but I think our city and community really deserves to look at the best of the best from throughout the country. And as I said, that may be somebody internal, it may be somebody local, it may be somebody within the state. So what we could do, and commissioners, if you feel differently, let me know. That has been my perspective. As for a search firm, I think we could ask that question specifically in the RFP to say, you know, please share with us your experience at a local level, state level, and national level. And then that could be information that we have when we select the search firm. And that's a pretty easy question to add into the RFP. And then that would give us an opportunity to look at what their past experience is, but also their level of expertise.
Mayor, can we hear from Mary Beth regarding this?
Thank you, Commissioner. Good morning, commissioners. I think that the way that factors in, Commissioner Lanier, is any firm should be able to, who's had expertise in recruiting CEOs and local executives, should be able to, you know, put
had expertise in recruiting CEOs and local executives, should be able to, you know, put out a broadcast of a wide search. I think the way that factors in that question is you go through the candidates, who has various kinds of experience, paralleling what you get back from your feedback or your profile of what you want. And I think that's how that dovetails in, as you scrutinize and assess the candidate's background and experience and expertise.
So, Mary Beth, you're saying that a local firm should have the capacity and the relationships to search nationally.
Yes, yes.
Clear firm of this nature.
You want a robust, you want a firm that has robust capacity, because this is, you know, the CEO of the corporation, essentially. And so they should have that experience. Otherwise, as you go through and deselect out on your firms, that would be something that you would not want to select, somebody who doesn't have experience at high-level recruitment, professional recruitment process. But I think specifically to your question, the issue of candidates to be considered, that's how, that's a factor you would look at in evaluation and assessment. And that's how you get to that issue.
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner. That's a good clarifying question. Commissioner O'Connor?
Yeah, yeah, I too, I feel like this is a good process, it looks like. One thing I do want to just be cognizant of is the timeline, that it's four to six months, and we will be making a transition as Commissioner Schaefer ends his term as well. And so a possibility of making sure that Commissioner elect Rep. Hart is involved in the process along the way, given the event that it does go past four months when Commissioner Schaefer is gone, so that he has the requisite knowledge and is up to speed to be, ability to make a good firm decision.
Yeah, thank you. That's a good point. And Commissioner Schaefer and I, we can, actually, three of us can talk about that. I think it's, regardless of where it falls in the process, we should already be thinking about how we're going to help Commissioner-elect Hart get ready to join us on this body. So, yeah, we'll make sure that that's included.
You look sadder than John, that's something.
I'm just making a few notes of things to follow up on. But yeah, thank you. We will definitely be mindful of that.
Just on that note, Mayor, yesterday, Commissioner-elect and I spoke, and we're already starting the process of trying to bring him up to speed and make him a valuable and contributing member, much as Commissioner Schaefer has been.
Impossible.
Indoctrinating, really, Greg.
Thank you. So Commissioners, just to be really clear about next steps, I'm going to go ahead and continue to work with the HR Department and procurement to get an RFP out for, with the HR Department. I'll be working with Mary Beth to get a survey out to the community about candidate profile, and then I'll be working with Mary Beth to set up four brief meetings in the community, probably an hour to an hour and a half long, similar to what was done for the police chief and fire chief, to give the community an opportunity to come together and also give feedback on the candidate profile. And we'll gather and aggregate that information that, once a search firm is identified, we can share with them. And then we can also, once a search firm is in place, talk to them about if they want to do additional stakeholder interviews to finalize that candidate profile before a position is posted. So if everyone is in agreement, I'll get moving and work on that with Mary Beth. We'll make sure all of you are kept abreast of the plan and the dates and times and locations of the meetings, if you want to attend that. And then also, we'll make sure that the survey is shared with all of you, so that you can share it with your constituents, and hopefully we'll get a lot of really robust, good input. Okay, Commissioner?
One last point. As we're having those community conversations, I want to remind us of the feedback that came from the GR Talks Back community forums, is that many people feel as though we tap into the same people every time we have an opportunity to have community engagement or public engagement. And so I want to, I hope that we're all very intentional. So this is probably more to you, Mary Beth, if you're going to start that process as you're creating the candidate profile, that we're more intentional about hearing from voices that we typically do not hear from. And so that will mean finding different ways of trying to connect with people, because if we publish it the way we've always published those opportunities, we're going to get the same characters. And so I want to make sure that we're hearing that feedback and that we're doing something different.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. I couldn't agree more. So we'll work to make sure that we have a really thorough process to reach as many folks as possible. Final thought, Commissioner Kelly?
Well, I just wanted to add to that, that I had a conversation yesterday with Shannon Cohen, who was part of that Talk Back series, and she's working for the Community Foundation, and they have also had the same kind of effort going on to get feedback for programs that they're working on, as has our Planning Department for Age Friendly Community. So, Mary Beth, that might be, those might be a couple of resources to tap into those groups that they've reached out to. So they both had a wide array for the same reasons, that they were being much more intentional.
Yeah, thank you. All right, any final thoughts, Commissioners? Okay, thank you. We are adjourned. A couple of things, we have public safety, yes, right now?
Yes.
Right now, down in 6:01.
11:30.
11:30, so you have four minutes to take a break. And then, Commissioners, we're back in here tonight for our 7 o'clock meeting. So public safety, if you are a member of Public Safety, please go down to Public Safety, 601.